Alright, I officially call the meeting to order. You would please join me in standing and say my pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the British Isles, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright. It makes me especially mindful of the Olympics going on as we speak. First item of business is minute approval. We have the July 15th Board of Trustees meeting minutes, and we have the July 25th Board of Trustees Workshop meeting minutes. I will take a motion to accept... You guys had a chance to look?
Yes.
Take a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Second?
Second.
This is both sets? Yes, both sets. All in favor? Any comment? Any discussion?
I see the update from the original July... July 15th, so we're good.
Excellent. Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay. The next item of business is we have announced a public hearing for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade Phase Two Seeker Full Environmental Assessment Form Review. So I will take a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make any comments regarding the Seeker for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade to Phase Two? I don't want... Hearing none, seeing none. I am going to make a motion that we... Oh, what's the right word? That we leave the public hearing open and continue it to the next board meeting, which is September 9. We have some additional work to do, I think, on our part, and would like to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to make a comment if they would like to. So if I could have a motion to continue the public hearing to the next meeting? So moved. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. And in the meantime, you know, take a look at your... We have now the full environmental assessment form, parts one, two, and three. They will be available on the website. And we will finalize that review in September. Okay. Just cleared my agenda. There it is. Okay. The next item of business is the Village of Red Hook court audit for year ending 5/31/24. And what was added to your packet was year ending 5/31/23. In reviewing... When I did my review, I realized that there was something that wasn't matching, and so went back to the auditor, and she did a review. And so there is a minor adjustment to 2023 that then makes 2024, that leads into 2024. And so we we have done our duty by having an auditor review the books. Everything is in order. And so I would like to... I would take a motion to accept the auditor's report and the... For the year ending May 31st, 2024, and for the adjustment for 2023.
So moved.
Oh, Charlie.
I'll take Charlie and Kim's second. How about that? Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Terrific. I am particularly pleased to be completing this in August. Now, the next thing is not on the agenda, but I am adding it now to the agenda. And this is the resolution that I just shared with you. Happy to share a copy with anyone who would like one. This is a resolution to authorize the purchase of a 7-foot-by-16-foot equipment trailer. What we have in the packet, which is about at least 15 pages, which is why I didn't make multiple copies. We have... So I'll just read the resolution because it summarizes it. "The Village of Red Hook has just acquired a mini excavator, and the mini excavator travels quite slowly and is best used by being moved to its location via a trailer. And whereas a 7-foot-by-16-foot equipment trailer is the size that is needed to transport the mini excavator. And whereas Jerome Smith has offered a 7-foot-by-16-foot equipment trailer to the village for $2,200 with no delivery charge." And just to be clear, Jerome Smith is Jake Smith, who is our DPW foreman. "Whereas we have reviewed five quotes for new and used equipment trailers of the same size, all of which are higher than $2,200. The lowest one we have here is $2,300, and they all require delivery. The $2,300 one is in Arkansas. It was one for just over $3,000 that's in Tennessee." And so the resolution states now therefore being resolved that the Village Board of Trustees authorizes the purchase of the 2011 cross-country 7-foot-by-16-foot equipment trailer offered by Jerome Smith, and be it further resolved that this equipment be purchased from the Water Fund Budget Line, EW 8320.2, which is capital outlay, in which we have about $14,000 and change in the budget. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Steve, second?
Second.
Thank you.
I would... I have a question.
Absolutely. I do too.
Do... Is there a process for... Just to address any perceived conflict of interest by purchasing equipment from a village employee?
I don't know that... I'm not aware of a conflict of interest process. The way I looked at it was by... Jake gave me his quotes, I got my own. And so that's why you have five instead of the normal three, or six arguably with his. And so I guess my perspective would be having those extra quotes for, you know... It's pretty clear that we need a trailer.
Right.
And it does appear from all of the research and quotes that I've gotten that this is a... That we are getting a good deal.
Yeah, I mean, it's on us to do a due diligence and make sure that, you know, it's a good deal for the village.
And I am certainly open to to suspending this and letting you all do some additional due diligence. But as I say, that's why I got five additional quotes instead of the one or two.
Yeah, I was more just wondering if there was a...
I don't think we have an actual...
...procedure, or if there was anything extra we had to do, you know, such as get additional quotes? If it was written down?
Not that I'm aware of in our code. And I'm not aware... I don't know if there's a state law associated with that.
Nikon might have something, you know, on the books, a standard procedure of them.
I would be happy to add the stipulation that it be reviewed by legal counsel.
Yeah, I think that's...
It would seem to make sense to put the documentation in part of the official record so anyone going back having questions can see that that due diligence was performed.
My only question. The size of the trailer... I'm not super familiar with all of the equipment that we have in the Highway or DPW department. But is that... Would that size be sufficient for potential any transportation that's needed, or is it like just specifically for the new excavator thinking if we... I know like with the upcoming WIA projects, there's potential other equipment that we're gonna acquire. Getting a trailer that would be sufficient to haul most or if not all needed equipment? If the 7-by-16 is a substantial size?
Right. The majority of our equipment actually is mobile. We have a service truck, we have... The other things that would benefit from transportation would be the zero turnbellers that we have, or smaller than that. So I think any additional equipment that we get that would be larger than this, the learning would be we need to ask the question of how's it gonna get around? Which didn't really dawn on me. I mean, I think it can move, but it's really not suited to be 79, for example. Steve, did you have a question?
No.
So I'm gonna add be it further resolved that prior to purchase legal counsel will be consulted? And any recommendations will be followed. How about that?
Sounds good.
So the revised resolution. Steve, will you motion that one also? You okay with motioning?
So moved.
Kim, you okay with seconding the?
I am.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
What is the number of this resolution?
Twenty-six.
Actually, I'm on the ball tonight. Only because we have only one resolution. Okay. And just point of order, our next workshop meeting is August 22nd. And those are held upstairs in the second floor conference room. And our next board meeting is September 9. Hard to believe we're around the corner from September. Next item of business is a report from Madam Treasurer.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, very nice.
Okay, this is the treasurer's report for August 5th, and we are going to first report our account balances as of 7/31/24. In the general fund, we had $1,823,443.16. The water fund had $410,154.11. Payroll clearing account, $40,141.69. Sewer fund, $709,960.93. And I'll just pause to make a comment here that we got our final distribution into for Phase One of the sewer project in. So when thinking about last month's report was $48,000 and change, and now there's $709,000 and change. Significant difference, that is why. And a good portion of that will be spent out in the vouchers that are up for pool of this evening. Hardscrabble account, $10,625. Village green, $8,259.61. Health insurance, $12,181.53. And petty cash, holding steady at $52.93. Our reserve checking balances are for the fire department, $10,287.11. Police, $17,676.64. USDA, $143,828.66. The highway reserve is $590.26. Snow reserve, $3,396.52. Tower reserve, $18,343.54. Unemployment reserve, $7,276.15. Court reserve, $3,416.32. And the office reserve is $1,007.22. And finally, the monthly expenses for July were general fund, Water fund, $343,902.38. Payroll clearing account, $3,398.26. And the sewer fund, $16,920.3.
And Lori, just to confirm, the water fund monthly expenses are on the higher side, and that's related to payments for the WIA projects, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. And I will be reporting on those WIA projects later. Any questions for the treasurer? Hearing none. Motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Thank you, Kim. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you very much. And I will actually take this moment to ask for a motion to pay bills after audit.
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a reminder, all vouchers are upstairs in the conference room to be approved by Wednesday morning. Okay, next item. So before I get into the police report, I'm just gonna read out the property tax collection report because that's all I need to do, correct, Jim?
I think you need to, it's just more of a report to...
Okay. Well, I'll read it out. And this is for the month of July?
It is.
Property tax collection report. Property taxes due to the village total, Total village parcels, 763. Accounts receivable outstanding to the village as of June 30th, 2024 was $59,741.98. Delinquent accounts as of 7/31/24, there were 34.
I didn't change that date. I'm sorry about July.
The accounts receivable?
Yeah.
Gotcha. The accounts receivable was... Apologize. That's why we read it out. July 31st. And then penalties due as of 7/30/2024 is zero. And we also have a utility billing report. Charlie will read. Perfect. Now we move on to the monthly police report for the month of July. There were 219 incidents. 105 of those were in the Village of Red Hook. 97 were in the Town of Red Hook. 17 were in the Village of Tibbly. There were 102 water tower security checks. There were 70 uniform traffic tickets. 45 of those were in the Village of Red Hook, 12 in the Town of Red Hook, and 13 in the Village of Tibbly. Parking tickets, there were 14 in the Village of Red Hook, and none in the Town of Red Hook or Village of Tibbly. There were nine arrests, five in the Village of Red Hook, and four in the Town of Red Hook, and none in the Village of Tibbly. I reported last month on the fire incidents through June. I do not yet have the July numbers, so I will report on that the September meeting. And I have my library report. The library had their regular board meeting on July... Thursday, July 18. The full board was in attendance, and as well as the library's executive director, Alex Keller, and I was the only guest. I am pausing because I intended to write down the names of all of the board members, and I got to Anna Gregg, who is the president, and didn't finish. So there are seven total members down the board of the Village at the Red Hook Library. The policy committee discussed the possibility of reducing the board terms from five years down to three. They will be checking with legal counsel as to whether that would require a charter change. Term limits were also discussed. No decisions were made. I can just add that I do know that it is in the charter, and so making that change would be... Would require a change to the charter. Strategic planning. This committee reported on small focus groups that they had held, and they also noted that they will be reviewing their survey results. And then, under Board of Directors, Treasurer Amy Houston announced that she will be stepping down from the board at the end of 2024. She has served for eight years. New board member Grace Catchigan was proposed to take over the treasurer position. She does have a back... She is a... She is an accountant, a certified public accountant in her day job, and no vote was taken. The reports for the treasurer reports and the directors' report are in the July 2024 board packet that's on the library's website. That website is redhooklibrary.org. If you do backslash Board of Trustees. Embedded in the text towards the bottom of the page, you'll see board information. And you can get the information there. Nothing... The finances are proceeding smoothly. There were no major surprises in their financial reports. Their cash position is excellent. And upcoming meetings, they have their next meeting Thursday, August 15th, at 6:30. And they do have a committee schedule. It's on the library calendar on the website. So just a note there with Amy Houston going off the board, that means there is a board spot that will be opening up. If anyone is interested in considering board membership on the library, they should reach out. They can certainly reach out to us here in the village, or they can reach out to the library. And because there are a few months to get a new person lineup. And then the next... My next reports are for the sewer project. As Treasurer Urban mentioned, the USDA RD final dispersment has been received. Woo-hoo! Most of the vouchers for final payments are included in the voucher packet. We have one item we are reviewing with legal counsel before issuing the final retainage check for cover construction. More on that to come. And the only other outstanding item is the single audit. We are awaiting a draft of the single audit from UHY. This is for the year ending 5/31/22, and we expect that within a week. Sewer expansion Phase Two. Our working group met July 19th to review both the ongoing operations and the Phase Two project. The Phase Two project was submitted for the Consolidated Funding Application, or CFA, for the Community Infrastructure Grants for Pro-Housing Communities Program Grant on July 30th. The deadline is July 31st. As a reminder, the project as currently designed includes the addition of approximately 170 properties in the village, adding 175,000 gallons per day capacity for use by the village, and an additional 50,000 gallons per day capacity dedicated to the Town Sewer District Number One, as requested by the town. The proposed map includes three potential developments: Cookingham East, the Ross property, and Anderson Commons, as well as expanding service to the south of the wastewater treatment plant along Route 9; to the west, including the middle and high schools; to the east, to include the former Red Hook Electric; and to the southeast, to include the light industrial district and a good portion of that residential district. The estimated probable cost of the alternative, including the Town Sewer District capacity, is $19.7 million, or around about $20 million. And just for a point of information, the IUP listing for the bipartisan infrastructure funding grant, maximum grant would be $10 million, and then the CFA maximum grant that we just applied for would be $3 million. And the capital cost associated with the town's 50,000 gallons per day capacity would be funded by the town. We should find out whether we are awarded these grants, and if yes, for how much, in the fall. Updates will be shared as I get them. There are no updates. Well, I'll let Steve talk about that. Abraham's Park Task Force. The survey... We do have a survey. The survey is on the village website. And we hope to... We plan to share the information flyer as widely as possible. The survey also has a Spanish version, and we are still looking to push out the survey to get more results. There are no updates on the union contract negotiations. The WIA water projects. So we have three WIA projects in... Actually happening as we speak. The first one is the SCADA controls upgrade. This project is underway and now expected to be completed by mid-August. The original expected completion date was the end of July, and so we're getting close. The SCADA system controls the water system, and this upgrade will increase the efficiency of the system. We have had a few, as they are transferring to a new control box and some electric connections. There's been some blips in water pressure, but that is part of the process. And once this is complete, and early indications are everyone is quite pleased with where this is headed. Cherry and Grave Street Water Main Replacement. This project began in mid-May and is currently on hiatus. The contractor is Amity Construction. Amity is due back September 3rd to complete the project, which includes completing the new water main on Grave Street, doing all the new service lines to residents served by these water mains, and then cleaning up and paving Cherry and Grave Street. Still substantial completion is contracted to be December 17th, expecting the project to be done well before then, probably in October. And then the water tank rehabilitation. This project is well underway. All of the interior blasting is complete, and primer has been applied. What's remaining is applying pit filler. That's literally just smoothing out the interior of the tank so that when they apply the final coats of paint, not that it matters what it looks like, since there are very few people who will actually see the inside of our tank, but that's just extra support and protection for the tank. And then they will apply two final coats of paint. They also have... Need to install an outside drainpipe. So in the future, if there's a... Happens to be an overflow, it will not be pouring over all the edges of the tank. It will go down a drainpipe. And the contractor is Worldwide Industries, and completion is currently expected by mid-September. And I just want to add, we have... There's a lead line inventory project that we are working on. We and every other municipality with a water system. This inventory is due to the state in October. This project is in process, and I will have a more detailed update for you all at our next meeting. And then last couple of things, Dutchess County Transportation Council. As I mentioned, I am the representative... One of the rural representatives for the Supervisors and Mayors Association for Dutchess County. It is actually a very informative and interesting council to be a part of. Lots of good information, and I think as we continue to look at ways to do some traffic calming, understanding the traffic patterns in our community, it's... I'm finding it very helpful to be... To attend these meetings. There was a meeting... These meetings are monthly, so there was a meeting on July 31st. There were notices of funding opportunities, which they refer to as NOFOs, for those who didn't know that. Little acronym, and there were quite a few. And Bridge New York awards have been announced, and so those were shared. The New York State DOT has a draft of a transportation master plan. I believe they have a survey, if anyone is interested in going to their website and taking a look at that. The Town of Red Hook received additional funding through the Transportation Improvement Program, which is referred to as TIP, for the Sauk Hill Road Bridge. That project has been in the works for a long time, and when they finally got down to the numbers, they didn't have enough funding, and so they've been given some additional funding. So hopefully that project will proceed, not this year. I don't know if it's 2025 or 2026, one of those two. That's the other thing that I am coming to realize is these transportation projects have a long lead time. So it's important to be thinking about what we might... If there's a major project we might be interested in, it's just gonna take a long time to get it to construction. They did also share their work on the Vulnerability Assessment for the county, called the Transportation Resilience Improvement Plan, or TRIP. There is a final draft available, and they have a website, which is resilientwaysforward.com. There's also an Adaptation... I think I said that right. Adaptation Toolbox on their website for municipalities. I have not yet explored that, but I believe it has recommendations and other projects that have been done, which will be an interesting thing to take a look at. Their annual traffic count study for pedestrians and bicyclists will be conducted in September. I've submitted several areas and intersections to be included. They'll let me know soon which ones they will include. These meetings are open to the public. Their next meeting is August 28th at 10:00 a.m. Minutes, future dates, and information are all available on their website, which is duchessny.gov backslash departments backslash transportation-council backslash transportation-council. Not sure why there are two, but in any case, it's a website with lots of information on it. And then just a couple of other things. And then just a couple of other things. County Executive Sue Sorino met with me, Supervisor McKeon, Mayor Griffin, and Mylan Supervisor Al Lebruto at Red Hook Town Hall on July 2nd. That was at the county executive's request. She indicated that she was looking to hear from our communities as to what issues, what issues we're facing and the projects that we're working on. So we very much appreciated that opportunity to spend, spend a little time with the county executive. And then lastly, sadly, the, that nasty word COVID, which I was hoping never to say again. You haven't noted, it is all around us, and unfortunately, we are no longer, we no longer have tests or masks available, but please stay home when you're sick. If you have COVID, I understand the medication, Pavlovit is, can be very effective, so see a doctor if your symptoms are significant. And that is it for my report. And so Deputy Mayor is not here, so we will go on to Trustee Line.
All right. I have a couple of reports here for the month of July. Let's start off with Materials Management. In the month of July, the Village Highway Department collected 2.27 tons of recycling, which was made up of 1.2 tons of co-mingled, 0.46 tons of cardboard, and 0.61 tons of paper. We also collected 4.37 tons of garbage, which was transported to Accra at a total cost of $785.54. That includes $502.55 in tipping fees and $33.92 of fuel surcharge. Unfortunately, for the second month in a row, we did incur a small penalty for contaminated recycling of $2.44, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it just indicates that we need to try and be a little more careful with what we toss in the recycling bin. Please check the village website and our recycling calendar and the information there for what can and what can't go in the recycling. The village also paid $246.63 in monthly fees for use of the Welsh Dumpster Service, and over the course of the month, the village collected $2,927 from the sale of garbage tags. And that's broken down as follows. $2,510 was taken in at Village Hall, and $417 was taken in by the village library.
Charlie, just a, just a quick question. I see in June, we had a particularly high quantity of garbage, and there's an asterisk on our chart here, but I don't see it in...
I think the, I think it was just the way the, the schedule worked in that there was an extra, ended up being an extra collection in June and one less in July.
Got it. Thank you.
So it was just the way that the months fail. Yeah.
Thank you.
So yes, Water Treatments Facilities Monthly Report. So during the month of July, the water treatment facility treated 9,45,500 total gallons, which is an average of 291,776 gallons a day, which is a lot. That's right up there with the highest volume of water flow through the plant. And we had a similar level of use last month. By all accounts, there has been a lot of valve exercising and that always...
Yeah, the valve exercising led to, when they exercised the valves, it, it sort of broke loose a bunch of debris, and so they frequently opened a nearby fire hydrant to flow the water through, to flush it out. We were also doing general hydrant flushing around the village in the same timeframe. And the Cherry and Grave Street project uncovered an existing leak, and they made it worse before it got fixed. And with the Water Tower project, we have the new bladder tank. I think none of these things by themselves account for it, but I think all of them together seem to...
And there was an issue with the sensor, for the overflow sensor for the water tanks?
Yes, for the water tanks.
So we spilled water from the water tank as well.
Yes, that is correct.
So let's hope that August, we don't have any of those things.
Certainly less of them.
And we can get down to a more traditional volume. And, you know, so they discovered a leak in the Cherry Graves area, and that's now fixed, and this is all, all good news. We also, as we always do, collected three bacteriological samples from three different locations in the system and sent them out to be tested. And they all came back clean, no coliform, no E. coli present in those samples. And during the month of July, the water treatment plant used 75 gallons of sodium hypochlorite, and that comes to an average daily use of 2.4 gallons per day. So yeah, there were some pretty heavy volume days during the month. I mean, and by heavy volume, they were up over 400,000 gallons in that day, and that's very high. So one expects and hopes that those coincide with those times when they were exercising and flushing the water system.
Yeah, I think that, that may coincide with the overflow of the water tanks.
I also have a report, I serve as liaison to the Sawkill Watershed Community, and the Sawkill Watershed Community Leadership Committee met on July 24th here in Village Hall, continuing a discussion of organizational needs and priorities for, for the year. A lot of the meeting was taken up with reviewing the groundwater testing that they'd just gone through. They set up and provided vials for residential groundwater, for testing well water, and that all was sent off, and the kind folks and students at Bard ran those samples. They also talked about coordinating with the Winnicke Land Trust on a, on a hike along the Sawkill, and the possibility of purchasing vests for their amphibian migration work, which they do every, do they do it every spoonful? But it's, it's a very popular activity checking on during the times of the year when you are having amphibians crossing the street and making sure that they don't all get squished. They are, the committee, the community is, is interested in looking into pesticides and pesticides in the Sawkill and the watershed, and, you know, possibly doing some testing for that. There was also been a request from the Pace University Land Use Leadership Law Center, LULA. Tiffany Zizula has approached the community about including the Sawkill watershed in some planning work that they're going to do, which could be very valuable, useful. They try and respond to residents' requests that come in from anywhere in the watershed. There's a couple of issues that have been of recent interest. There's a neighbor of the Red Hook Course who's concerned about some work in the Sawkill over there. And then there's a property owner, Dan Scream, from the wastewater treatment plant, that is concerned about flow and erosion, and that tributary to Sawkill has been communicating with us.
Yes, and I think you know, they, they also reached out to DEC, who did respond. And our village engineer has also been to meet with them, to go over their questions.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, their concerns are being addressed and we're getting the best information we can to them. So they're looking into doing more water quality testing next month, and they're putting together some, a list of parameters to test for. And next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August 21st here.
Thinking about the vests and thinking about, I know the town does spring cleanup, and I believe they have vests. I don't know if you have vests for that.
They have, but they borrowed ours.
They borrowed ours that we have for Village Green.
And how many, do you have, I guess the question, if we have a lot, if it's, you know, we use them...
We have like, I think, 15 to 20.
So we use them twice a year, so just as a thought, if that, you know...
That is, that's a nice thought. They are specifically thinking that they, they do have a little, a small amount of money, and they're looking for personalized, you know, Sawkill watershed community vests.
And that's a whole different ballgame, but again, I just thought I would mention that since we have the asset and they're looking to use it for a short period of time, that that would be a, a way for them to put their money into something else. But if they want fancy ones, that's a different thing.
It's a nice offer. I also serve on the Community Preservation Fund Committee, and I don't believe they have, they have met recently, but you did reach out and got me the, at least we have the current balance of the Community Preservation Fund, and that is, stands at a whopping So that's pretty healthy. I mean, I was surprised, given recent activity and use of the fund, so.
Me too.
Right. There we go. Let's find more projects, preferably in the village.
Oh, yes.
I also have a utility billing report here. So for the month of July, the, were $336.20 of utility bills issued. No penalties slash finance charges. We have received, as far as utility payments, $181,889.71. And as far as the cancer receivable outstanding to the village as of August 1st, a balance of $40,537.60. So that sounds pretty good, you know? This is pretty normal. And there are no bill adjustments this month. And I think that's it for me.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Trustee, ready?
Good evening. For the Village Green Committee, the current balances for the Village Green-related budget accounts at the end of July are for the community beautification or contractual expenses. There were no expenses during the month of July, so the balance remains at $440.30 for shade tree contractual expenses. There were no charges this month, and the Village Green Committee checking account, as Lori mentioned earlier, is $8,259.61. And I was out of town for most of July, but have been in contact with our intern who started to implement the trees into the GPS and mapping program that the village uses. There have been a handful of storms so far this summer that have hard hit our trees, and many residents' businesses have lost trees, and we're hoping that we can give new life with our seasonal plantings. We also have ideas to help replant the construction area over by the wastewater treatment plant, and we'd love some community involvement or organizing, planning, and implementation. The project will partner with Climate Smart Communities Task Force. If you're interested, please reach out to me. And residents and businesses interested in having trees planted in their adjacent village street or New York State Highway right-of-way, volunteering for planting days, or sponsoring a Village Green Committee beautification project, you can contact myself or Jen Kavanaugh, the clerk. And meetings are open to the public. Reach out if you are interested in joining the next meeting. They are also listed on the village's website.
Kim, just a clarification on the community beautification. Because we're in a new budget year, that, that $440 needs to be updated.
No, zero.
Well, that, yes, that is last year.
Thank you for that. Right. For the Sewer Department, we continue to work with the village engineer on planning of the expansion for Phase Two, as we have the open public hearing for the speaker. Our grant application has been successfully submitted in the most recent Consolidated Funding Application Portal as part of our pro-housing sector. Additionally, we are working to make process as easy as possible for residents to understand the process involved in being added to the use area when there's space permitted, if there are any intended use changes, or if there are any intended use changes in the existing lots. As a reminder to all residents, whether you're in the sewer use area or not, please be kind to your pipes. While you're near the kitchen, please don't put any fats, oils, or greases, also known as fog, down your drains, because they clog the pipes up and make the system stressed out. What goes down your drain matters. And if you are in the sewer use area and the emergency alarm goes off, call the village sewer operator at 845-758-1081, press option eight, and then only silence the alarm after you've notified the sewer operator. Otherwise, we don't know that the box, otherwise we don't know the alarm is going off. And please do not open the box or tamper with village-owned equipment. For the Speed Limit Initiative Report for the month of July, at the last board meeting, the board officially passed a resolution to order new solar speed signs as you enter the village in accordance and cooperation with the DOT, as they, those roads are state-controlled. This has been an ongoing process, and we are thankful for everyone's understanding. We are still waiting on final reports from our engineer team, and you can see the tape on the ground from the county traffic counts that are coming up, and our team is waiting on that data. The engineer firm will be compiling their own data and utilizes data from county and state to make fully informed reports and suggestions regarding school zone and lowering speed limit zones through the village.
And Kim, I can give you an update, that I did recently receive response from the DOT regarding those speed signs, and so we have a few additional hoops to jump through before we can purchase them and install them. I'm not sure if I shared that with you, so I'll hold that to you.
Thank you.
But we are, we are continuing in the process.
That's excellent. For the Town of Red Hook Green Lane Trails Committee, I was unable to attend the meeting in June, sorry, in July, but according to the notes that they discussed, particularly the hard hit from storms, specifically the waterline trail in the Winnicke property and the roof Oha Wetland Walk adjacent to Rec Park. John Kuhn and his crew and Dave Brangitis worked hard to clear those trails after the storms. There was also help from other volunteers and the Winnicke Land Trust crew. Ravi Menge and Jim Blackney also came to clear the entrance of the trails. There have been proposed trails to implement in the Cookingham Porcelain on the west side of Route Nine. Existing farm roads and proposed trails are indicated in the map attached to the report by a broken-down brown line, and once work on those trails begin, they will be able to be walked and recorded to be added to trail databases, including all trails. The Sawkill Trailblazers are entering the next phase, and the split rail fencing will begin at the Aspen Wall Road entrance to the main Sawkill extension, and most initial rough clearing has been done through the Kelly Road, and secondary clearing and route removal will be needed. If you're interested in volunteering, you can reach out to Jen Adams at the Winnicke Land Trust at jen@winnicky.org, or Samantha Moy at samantha@winnicky.org. They will also be installing a bridge, similar to what they recently installed at the Flying Marsh, in which they will need volunteers, specifically those with carpentry experience. The Climate Smart Communities, our team met early on in the month, and will be meeting again tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. If you're interested, please join. We had our final meeting with our CCE Representative, Kelsey, who's moving on to another opportunity with NYSARDA. We are incredibly thankful to the support and hours that Kelsey has given to us, and we begin our journey for the long haul. We'll continue with a new representative and hope to have them onboard tomorrow. At this point, we're moving forward with the assessment and hope to get in some of the clean energy communities actions completed at the same time. This task force is open and still recruiting. If you are interested in being involved and to express ideas and/or knowledge of ways to best move forward and working within the team setting to build a new pathway, we are interested in your input. So please reach out to either myself or Trustee Appenzeller. And that was the end of my reports.
Terrific. Thank you. And Trustee Appenzeller.
Good evening. The Village of Red Hook Building Department Monthly Report for July is as follows. Building permit issuance continues at a brisk pace with 15. There was one certificate of occupancy issued, 12 certificates of compliance, one municipal search, and there were no orders to remedy or stop work orders, do not occupy notices or court appearances. There were four complaints... There were four complaints, which the department is following up on, and a total of eight fire inspections. The fee revenue associated with this activity was $2,666.33. The July 11th Planning Board meeting had three items on it. The site plan and public hearing for St. John Street was tabled to the meeting this week on August 8th. The site plan for 12 Church Street was also tabled for this upcoming meeting, where a public hearing has been set, and a site plan for 7592 North Broadway also tabled for that meeting, and there will be a public hearing for that as well. On July 25th, the zoning board of appeals met, and there was an area variance granted for a side yard setback for a property located at 12 Garden Street. And then on the Public Spaces Initiative, there were a couple of things which took place at the most recent meeting, which was here at Village Hall on Saturday, July 7th. The committee does meet the fourth Saturday of each month here at Village Hall. The key topics for this meeting were a few different areas. Abraham's Park, you know, the mayor talked about, you know, the survey which is ongoing, and that will be really informative to get some of those results when, when that time comes. One of the things which was trialed last year was a public art display in conjunction with Art College, a studio art faculty member. And previously, that faculty member had expressed interest in collaborating for an event this year in the fall, most likely, which was the timing for that prior event. That individual is not around, the school is out of session there, but later in the summer or early fall, discussions are expected to commence, and hopefully that will lead towards some kind of an interesting exhibit later this year in Abraham's Park. The PSI committee will be reaching out to talk with the village to look about potential new garden locations, either in front of Village Hall or the village parking lot. And if a suitable location can be identified, planning will take place later this year, and potentially, depending upon the timing and location, you know, some of the prep work could take place, so planning could begin in the springtime. And much of the meeting was dedicated towards recapping prior events. June was a busy month. Hello Blooms, which was kind of one of the signature events for public spaces, was held on June 15th in partnership with the Reddick Community Center. As previously reported, it was successful, and the quality of engagement with visitors was excellent. There was somewhat lower attendance than the prior year, and that was also something in common with the then-and-now Festival at Historic Red Hook at the Elmandorf Inn, which the PSI also participated through tabling. And just in having conversations, the possibility of holding the event at an alternative location was discussed, you know, perhaps something closer to the center of town. But that will be the subject of further discussion, and, you know, we'll provide updates as that develops, if there is a change of venue. And the last major event for the year is on October 19th. That is the Pumpkins in the Park event, Abraham's Park. This will be the second year for that. Outreach to the Village Events Committee and potential community partners is expected to begin shortly, and there's a good blueprint in place from the prior year to build and improve upon. And finally, just a brief planning update. There was an in-person meeting held on Friday, June 21st with village representatives, Rupko and developers, who were the developers of the Gateway Project, and the village planner, Nelson Pope and Voorhees. And the purpose was to review the zoning and permitting processes for this project, discussing timeline, as well as initiating conversations on sewer capacity and expansion. And there was a site visit held after that meeting as well, for folks to walk the property. And I think later, in the summer, there'll be another meeting, perhaps?
That would be the plan, yeah.
So that's it for, for my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone have any general business that we've not covered? Any public comment? Seeing none. I do not have executive session for time, and we've already approved the vouchers, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So lived.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you very much.